So everybody clear on that?
When did you take public comment on this?
After a roll call.
After roll call, but then there's going to be. There's no more public comment.
We're clear on that process because Judith just made a good point. You don't want me to ask, let's do public comments. Great English. So what is typically you're not, well, not just typically as a standard, you're not supposed to make a public comment on items not on the agenda. On items on the agenda.
Right.
So in this case, we're asking, we're saying this, there is only one time to make public comment on the agenda and it's right in front of you.
Yes, or I mean, you could, you could open it up to public comment after or before you actually do the review speech. The public comment is not mentioned.
Other than things like our.
Oh, they're not being. The four of you.
Okay.
So you're going to do public comments on three A.
Yeah, whatever the number.
Right, but you're not going to do it for each candidate. Just.
They're heading on.
A June glitch, a Zoom glitch again.
Zoomy Zoom.
Is there anyone? I'm just curious who's online.
It says seven participants. That's a good. Four times.
Okay.
The other people, the other randomly, you talked about twenty five of them.
I think.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah. And then Gina Dixon, she wasn't able to make it first so weird. And Gina is second.
Is she, she's coming back at another time?
No.
Oh, okay.
Didn't know it would be this complicated, did you?
Oh, I'm sure he did.
Definitely two, right?
Comment to the people. Yeah. So some of it. Oh, it's not even. Are you?
We're on.
I'm on with everybody.
Me too.
Yeah, it's.
And I see Dave Cardinal, Karen. And this, I don't. I don't know if anybody can hear me on Zoom, but we are having a couple Zoom technical issues that we're working through. So thanks for your patience. We'll get started soon. Why didn't we? Did anybody else have Zoom issues? Because I did not. Mary definitely.
I think it's trying to get the schoolhouse into Zoom is the problem.
It's happening.
Which means the microphone doesn't connect to Zoom. And you could go.
You want to try that again with just unmute your computer?
Right.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Oh, so since. For those of you. Waiting for the meeting to start, we're working through some technical difficulties with the Zoom, so we will get started as soon as. So the team is off. I have a video that's saying that come off connections and all this. And then.
Well, I should just. Try and understand.
Yeah. Yes, I can make it present. Now, not for the schoolhouse, is that?
No. I mean, we could put a computer in front of the. I mean, if you want public.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what you have to do because there's no mic in front.
Right, but I mean, we don't guarantee that, you know, if you're not.
Yeah.
I have two.
I don't.
I have two computers.
Interviews, you have two, you can spare one?
I can spare one, yeah, and I even have a plug. Finally, my computers. Being useful.
Yeah. You know what I mean?
Do you want me to? I just would.
You would just log into the Zoom.
I'm already in, so.
Then we just need to here, set it up so the candidate has the mic and he can talk into it.
So you would just.
Yeah, I just get out of this.
I'll log in and like put my computer over there just because you only have one login, so then I can just join the meetings.
Well, he can, he can start, he can be me.
We might need you to have a computer in front of you. Plan B is to run the Zoom meeting off our laptops and so I can.
I'll, I can leave. Leaving.
So if I am mute right now, can these guys hear me like a regular Zoom? Yeah, straight, yeah. So to those. To those of you waiting on Zoom, we're working through some technical difficulties with Zoom. Thanks for your patience. All right. I see Rebecca, Karen, and Dave Cardinal. If one of you could give me the thumbs up, if you can hear, thank you, Dave, so they can hear us.
I am not the best at.
I like.
You're better than me.
Oh, no, it's not true. Turn on bu- volume. Okay.
Turn them.
Okay.
So there's no video right?
Oh, that'd be good.
But I'm not on mute, so they should be able to hear me.
I can.
People, no, no, see, just mute it and then I.
Yeah. Why is it saying all these things, not hearing anything?
I don't know. You want my, you want my lovely picture in there?
But that's the only problem.
And the muted dogs of people on Zoom should be able to see and hear me. I don't know if they can, but.
Can you hear him? Can they hear him?
You'll have to ask your candidate or other folks that are. Okay, so although I'm identified as Mary on this.
Yeah. These three dots right there.
Can I just do it here? Avatar, choose.
No, no.
Rename.
Rename.
I tell you, I'm so smart.
Candidate, because the next one's going to have a Senate edition. I'm not sure from a focus perspective, if it's, it's blurring pretty heavily, so I'm.
That's the background.
I know, but I'm pretty furry.
You want me to get.
No, 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 I don't care. I'm just trying to figure if we need to have a closer.
We can get rid of blur my background there.
Does that work? Is that good?
Yeah.
Because those dopey lights are going to be really, that's fine. You know, that shows on my head. All right.
All right, I'd like.
You know what? Let me just blur that because otherwise that one thing.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. For those of you who are joining us on Zoom today, I apologize. We're having technical difficulties with the Zoom connection through the schoolhouse, so we're going to be running this meeting as a typical Zoom meeting with the candidates zooming in at the table here in the schoolhouse for those that are in person. I'd like to, oh, roll, I guess we need to start with roll call vote.
President.
President.
Here.
President of the House.
Here.
Vice President of Massachusetts.
Here.
And here.
Here. And I will now start by opening up for oral communications. This is for items not on the agenda. We do not have any attendees in the schoolhouse. And I don't see any hands raised for oral communications on Zoom, so I will close that oral communication and move on.
Sorry, do you want to clarify that this is the only time that they can?
I'm going to give them the comment. Remember, I'm going to, yeah.
Thank you.
And so we will be moving on to our item three A, which is the interview sessions and appointments of the commission members for the ASCC and the Planning Commission. I would like to take public comment for anyone who would like to provide comment on the ASCC or Planning Commission applicants. This is the time for the public to make those comments. And there are no attendees in the schoolhouse, and I don't see any hands raised on Zoom, so I will close public comment on item three A. And we can now finally proceed with the beginning of interviews for the Planning Commission. The, our first interviewee is here in the schoolhouse, Ed McGavin. Ed, thank you so much for being here. It's nice to see you here in person. And we typically would go and rotate interview questions across the council, but given our technical difficulties, I'll be asking the questions today, but the council has all agreed on these questions. And so we'll start with, if you could tell us about yourself and why you're interested in serving on the Planning Commission?
Ah, okay. I've lived in, in Portola Valley for now, I think it's 12 years. I think when my wife and I were first thinking about, we were moving here from Vancouver, we looked at a lot of other communities in the Bay Area because she was being moved to the area. And Portola Valley was, was something that, you know, kind of first time we came here is like, oh, this, we're not looking anyplace other than here. And it was, there's something about, you know, the, the size and the feel and how nice it was in Portola Valley. It was also, you know, from a, you know, it's, I don't mean to say this, I'm not trying to be disparaging, but it clearly is not Woodside and it's not Atherton. It was, you know, there was, you know, it was really a nice, the, the atmosphere and everything of this town was really special when we first got here. To be honest, in the last 12 years, I've, you know, since I've learned more and more about Portola Valley and lived here and explored it, I've only, you know, it's, I'm fonder of it than when we moved here, so we have no intention of going anyplace else. That being said, I know that for the last year, we've been under this, you know, a lot of, more than one year, but for a little while, we've been addressed from, you know, obviously the state of California to, you know, go through and, you know, revise our master plan consistent with, you know, the, I forget what the name of the directive is, but, and which is, wasn't, you know, basically disrupted virtually every community from, you know, all up and down the state and, you know, and it was, it's been a really tough process. And I've watched a lot of people on this council and read a lot of things in terms of the Planning Commission, what they've been through to do that. And they really, I mean, it's, it's been tough and it's been hard and I've seen, you know, a lot of, it has, not everyone's been nice about it. So, you know, the people who participated, who've had things to say, and, but it wasn't a lot of wiggle room for that. And so from my perspective, what my interest is, in addition, you know, I've lived here a while, I've, to be honest, I've seen a lot of other people do a lot of work to try and keep the town, you know, keep it nice and, you know, try and continue to, you know, make Portola Valley what I actually think is probably the best place to live in the peninsula. And, you know, it's, I think to a certain extent, I think it's, I kind of feel like I, it's my turn, like I need to, you know, there's, that's a lot of work that a lot of people have done to, to, in this role. So I think that's probably my first kind of a bit of a guess, I'll call it, you know, obligation is what I'm feeling at the moment, right? And then obviously, I think from the standpoint of being, you know, just somebody, I don't, I'm not, have no intention of like, I don't want to subdivide my property. I don't want to, you know, there's already an ADU in my unit, in my house, in my area and the rest of that in my property, et cetera. I. You know, I, I am, I, I, I think that I would like to, one of the things that I think that I could do on the, on the Planning Commission is, is actually be just somebody who likes living here, right, as opposed to somebody who's, you know, trying to build something, try to create something or anything else like that. And so I think that's, you know, I think from, that's, that's the other part of my interest is to kind of represent other people who just like living here and maybe don't have the time. I'm, to be honest, I just stepped down from a really high pressure role at Amazon, which used to take up, you know, 100 hours a week. And I think that, that, you know, there's other people, when I was in that role, I didn't have time to do that and I didn't have time to, you know, to be on a group like this. So I think that's the other part of what, you know, is, is driving it, so.
Thank you. Um, second question is, have you attended a Planning Commission meeting within the last 12 months? And if you, if so, if you can kind of provide comments on your reactions to that, and that it's a two-part question, but I'll.
Yes, I did go to one, I think it was a back end. I've been to two, actually. So my, my reaction to that was, and again. I, that goes to my, my first comment, that this is, you know, all, all the time and effort was consumed with how to meet the state requirement with regard to the, the creating a new town plan, right? And the fact that it was, nobody really wanted to, you know, give, left to our own devices, we already had a plan, right? We really, we had an idea of, you know, we, we don't like being directed by the state on how to do stuff. And so my first observation is that, you know, how hard it was for the, the, the group to, you know, work through the issues and make everybody happy and, because nobody was happy, nobody wanted to do it, but nobody had, you know, it wasn't like everybody gave us a choice, right? Because the alternative was, you know, the whole builder's remedy, which is like, that is not, that's not a way to, I mean, that's the worst of all, you know, solutions. And so I think what I was, my, my thought process was through this is that, boy, this is horrible. Nobody wants to do this. On the other hand, they're doing a really good job of getting through it because from what I've seen, we're one of what, five communities or something in the state that have actually gotten through and gotten it approved or something like that? And everybody else is praying that something else is going to happen. Well, honestly, it's not, right? And so I, I was impressed by the fact of how seriously they took the responsibility, even though they, you know, it wasn't something everybody wanted to do. And how they really worked hard to address everybody's concerns, both, you know, the, the people that want to create and build additional, you know, you know, density and the people who didn't want to, right? And so trying to, I thought, to be honest, I was impressed with the, the work and, and how hard they, they did to come up and essentially, you know. Come up with a solution that is, I'd say, nobody likes it, but it's better than not having a solution at all, so.
Yep. And so to that point, obviously, the commission makes a lot of controversial decisions that also draw, you know, a big portion of our community to the meetings.
Well, I'd see, I shouldn't say, it seemed to be that there was more, would draw a bigger portion of our community to, you know, PV Forum and things like that than.
True.
The meetings themselves, but.
That's can be true, yes. And so along those lines, are you comfortable with making decisions and with these public audiences that may be deemed unfavorable by some and perhaps even at odds with your own personal preferences?
Yes, at this point in my life, I am, yes, so both professionally and, you know, I've, you know, I think I, just as I said, I was at Amazon for 10 years. I made a lot of unpopular decisions and, you know, wasn't, I ran all the delivery services up and down the peninsula for, for five of that, of those years. And there were a lot of times I was not popular with the people who worked for me as well as local communities where we built delivery stations and that kind of thing. And so, yeah, as I would, I, I, I understand the, the, I'd say the visibility of the role. I understand the times of popularity of the role. But the other thing is I go back to my first comment in terms of somebody has to do it and it has to be done. And the alternative is, I mean, you know, just with the way, you know, we're all adults here and, you know, we just, there's times where we just, you know, have to work through these things. So I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I understand it. It's not fun, but on the other hand, you know, like, I'm going to go back to, I thought the, the Planning Commission over the last couple of years, I mean, to be blunt, they've done the hard part. Now that it's approved, those, I mean, but that was not a, that was not an easy process. And so, yeah, I have a great, great deal of admiration for what they've been through for the last couple of years, so.
Thank you. Um. What strategies would you use to build consensus among members of the Planning Commission?
That's an interesting question because at least in terms of building consensus, a lot of that is very, as I would say, it all depends upon what, who's on the commission and what it is that they're. You know, what, what, why, why they're on the commission, what the issue before them was, and to be, other side of it is that it's clear and from falling through in terms of, you know, reading what people have said about the decision, the most recent decision that they made. I don't think there was consensus, right? And it came down to, you know, it was a, you know. It was a three to two vote or whatever it was. Yeah, I mean, and I don't think the few people who voted against it were necessarily in favor of it, right? And so there's times for consensus and there's times when you just have to, you know, move on, right? And there's an expression that I've learned in profession, it's called disagree and commit, that I don't have to agree with it, but this is the best we can come up with and now we all I need to commit and we only need to move forward with regard to this decision. But in terms of, you know, others, you know, you talk about strategies, I think, you know, the notion around, you know, discussion, letting everybody, you know, making sure that everybody's clear on what their positions are and, you know, so there are some things that you can compromise on and other things that people will not or shouldn't compromise on. And those, as I say, that's where you have to come down to, it's like all the, you know, again, the, the, at least my experience has been, you discuss, you talk about it, you try and reach some consensus if you can't, but then you have to limit it by time or whatever. You know, I, I actually thought that the Planning Commission this time around in terms of 47 meetings or something like that. That was the most, that was, that statistic alone really kind of blew me away. I did not realize how many public events had been held to try and reach consensus and try and educatedly share and so that everybody was, you know, provide transparency. I mean, that strategy in terms of transparency, but, but I don't, at the end of the day, consensus, you may never get it. You, so I don't know if that helped.
Yep, it does. Thank you. If you could share any foreseeable conflicts of interest or reasons that you might need to recuse yourself?
I'm trying to think. I don't.
Feel free.
I can think of some silly things. But I, no, I don't have any.
An example or two?
Yeah.
Where in town do you live? Because certain areas might affect your.
I live in Westbridge. I live up on Escobar Road.
Okay, and then in terms of your affiliations with the, the tennis club and things like that, are there anything?
I do not have, no.
And?
I'm not happy about four field, but it's right at the bottom of my road. That's not good one. That's not my, you know.
Okay. Doesn't it sound like there's anything major? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, why don't we open it up right now? Because we, I want to, we're running 15 minutes behind and we have a couple of minutes. Are there other, are there follow-up questions or new questions from the council? If not all.
I think you mentioned before, I'm just curious, how, what other sort of, I mean, how, even if you mean, how else can you kind of stand to form a town event?
Well, the gossip up and down my street, that's one, I mean, that's obviously, you know, the gossip up and down my street, you know, that's one, you know, you know, Tom Raves, things like that. So, but, you know, obviously I get the, and I, it's terrible. I have the world's worst memory for names of publications and things like that, but the, the thing I get every week that, you know, has all the news from up and down.
Almanack.
Almanack, thank you, that. I'm trying to think, you know, the, you know, like. Like when we'd have the little Planning Commission, when they, the, not just looking at the forum, but in the forum, when they then have, they publish those, about this was the Planning Commission's recommendation and here's the, you know, the little plat, you know, here's what the actual plan that we're putting together. I mean, actually, deep dive those things and look at that. And so. I can't say that I'm, you know, I'm sure I can think of some, but it's pretty informal to be blunt, so.
Anything else? No. All right, Ed, thank you very much.
Thank you for inviting me.
Your interview. We appreciate you coming in and really appreciate your interest in serving on the community.
All righty. And what's the process from here forward?
Um, we at the, towards the, after all of the interviews today, we will be having a discussion and a vote and the decision will be, be made today and I'm assuming staff will inform the candidates.
So here back, John, you sent the original email, right? Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Didn't meet it. Okay. All right. All right. Thank you.
Meeting with our um, uh, for, uh, typical protocol um in process. So thanks to everybody for your patience. Um, while we had that glitch, um, moving along to our second planning commission um interview, I'd like to welcome Nicholas Targ, who is here in Spoolhouse.
Great. Thank you very much.
All right, Nicholas, obviously, um, most of us uh know you, but um if you could just uh for, for the, the public and those that don't have your background as much, if you could tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the planning commission.
Sure. Uh, let me first start by uh thanking our uh planning director, our interim planning director who uh accommodated me. I was supposed to have been in Los Angeles today. Uh, and uh, uh, I'm very pleased that I'm here and I'm dry and that I'm safe. So I appreciate your creating that opportunity for me to do it uh remotely. Uh, my name's Nicholas Targ. Uh, my family's been in Portola Valley for, I guess, we, we bought the land. It's now the Hayfields about 45 years ago. Uh, I spent time there since I was a little boy. Uh, I grew up uh going to planning commission and town council meetings in Portola Valley since I was about 12 years old. I went to uh law school and to planning school largely based upon those formative experiences. Sometimes people say that a uh politician uh is working out their uh private issues publicly. Uh, my professional uh interest was sparked by having been at this, at the meetings uh in this town since I was, uh, since I was a kid. Uh, and it's been an honor and a privilege uh to serve on the planning commission uh since roughly the time that uh we moved back here to raise my kid uh about 15 years ago, maybe a little bit more. Uh, so, so that's been, that's been terrific. I have a commitment to the town uh of Portola Valley. Um, uh, it's hard to imagine the set of circumstances that would uh separate me from the town. Uh, and uh my goal on the planning commission is to create a fair, transparent uh process for individuals to embody in our planning decisions, the words that are in the uh general plan and to preserve the the rural environment that we have here, while at the same time creating opportunities for people uh to really express themselves uh through uh the built environment that they may uh be creating as well, of course, for the last uh couple of three years uh uh complying with state law.
Thank you. We went a little out of order. So my question is more as an existing member, we'd appreciate thoughts and impressions of the last year or two, in particular, what's gone well? And where, if anywhere, do you see opportunities for improvements?
Sure. I think what's gone well is we in fact did reach consensus on the planning commission with the housing element. And we had, as you may know, diverse views. Uh, and we were able to come together as a group and not just come up with a compromise, but come up with a plan that was cohesive and that hangs together as a solid plan. And if one is going to ultimately make a judgment about what works is what's in the product. And the product was a consensus uh view of where we should be, of where we should be going. Um, a lot of that was listening really closely to each other and paying attention uh to each other and uh not being competitive, but steel manning uh each other's ideas, even when you think that they may not necessarily be the greatest idea or the ones that you would agree with, but trying to really understand what the goal is that the other planning commissioners are seeking to understand. I had the privilege of working on to a dear colleague's letters. And that was an effort to try and crystallize um some of the more challenging issues that we were facing so that they could be dealt with systematically. And so we could ventilate some of the, I'm gonna say it, some of the more divisive issues. And uh, and really work through them head on, present uh a set of ideas, proposals uh that could serve as a point of departure. Uh, I worked with uh council member Taylor uh when he was on the planning commission on one of those. And I think that that was uh, that that was useful. Um, not only sort of crystallizing and helping me think through uh issues with another, I, I, again, I hate how this sounds, with another very thoughtful individual. Uh, but uh, um, but to be able to present some ideas and it thought through a well-formulated way and have people uh react to them. So I think that was uh, that was good. I think some of the other things that were good were uh bringing on uh technical experts. Uh, I think that our CEQA uh expert made a real difference in helping to understand what the opportunities, challenges, limitations uh were and helping us to form a good and solid path. We had that at least four attorneys uh who had some resonance with the issue of CEQA uh in the room. Uh, and I think that we ended up in a, in a pretty solid place uh because of that.
So my question is, what strategies would you use to build consensus among members of the planning commission, which in some sense you, you answered quite a bit of it in the last one. Um, but maybe you could elaborate. And I'm also interested in, you know, where you see opportunities for improvement.
Sure. I think that just uh going through the uh, the housing element, which is maybe one of the more contentious issues that we've, that we've dealt with. Some of the things, some of the tools uh to build consensus are, one, uh, the use of the dear colleague letters. And two, to steel man uh each other's idea to really listen. Three, I think it's also really important to, as a member of any body, to, to really understand the other, to the, understand the other people. To break bread with them outside of a shop, uh to to, to view them holistically and to, to really get to know them rather than as uh simply a, a planning commissioner. Uh, similarly, I think that there's value in making sure that you have your finger on the pulse of the, uh, the community to the extent that you can. Uh, some of the um uh ideas that were expressed previously by Jim, um PV Forum, people are not shy. But on the other hand, PV Forum presents kind of a pretty narrow section of uh, of the town. It's like, can we see some different hands for a moment? Uh, it, making sure that you know your neighbors, spoke to that. Uh, and engaging with people uh more broadly. Who's in your dog club, for example? Uh, who's in your garden? Who's on your hill? Uh, those are the sorts of things that I think uh are, are really, are really important. I think some of the other things that uh were helpful uh as well was actually having it, the, the decision makers from the associated um political bodies, having uh Don Bullard uh available to us, be able to talk with him to, for really us examine is too strong a word, but to really dig in and understand what the issues were rather than hearing about them secondhand, being able to really get into it. And having everybody work off the same sheet of music. Uh, and understand where points of confusion might be uh is also critical. Whether it's a people uh can have their own ideas, but, and own opinions, but they shouldn't have their own facts. Uh, so being able to present a, a real understanding of what those facts are and, and where the, where the kind of the glory parts are uh is, is helpful.
Uh, question of uh what do you see ahead of us for conflicts of interest or reasons you might need to be recused, but also what you see ahead of the planning commission?
Sure. Uh, so my uh conflicts, uh, my only conflict is with Stanford. Uh, I do work for Stanford. I do environmental work from, for Stanford. I do no work for Stanford on land use. And my firm, Holland and Knight, does work with Stanford on land use in Palo Alto and Redwood City. We do no work uh in Portola Valley uh with Stanford. Uh, my firm has done work and probably will continue to do work um with certain individuals uh in town. That does not represent illegal conflict of interest uh that would cause me to recuse myself. I do recuse myself uh to the extent uh that I can and that we have enough people available. Uh, because I don't want to have an appearance of a potential conflict of interest. Uh, so I could weigh in on uh on certain projects on Alpine, but I trust my other planning commissioners in, so long as we've got a quorum, uh, I don't need to be there. And I don't want to create any confusion. So I play things on the inside of the line uh on that. Um, what do I see for us more generally? Implementation, implementation, implementation. Uh, I see zoning codes, zoning codes, zoning code, program, program, program. Um, and also just a hecton of uh, of community engagement. And that's, I mean, I think that's kind of the name of the game. And then this Ford Field. And uh, uh, but that's maybe more in the weeds than we need to go right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, that kind of wraps up our standard questions. Does anybody have any um ad hoc that we want to add in the last moments here? Any follow-up?
I guess the only one I'd have is, based on your experience, um, we look forward to a new planning director and uh, you know, looking at the staff build out. Um, I don't know if uh you have any thoughts on how to integrate um a new planning director and, and work well with the commission. I mean, and the reason I'm asking is more for us all to plan for success. And so if you have any thoughts, if you don't, that's fine too, because obviously we don't know who the person is and we won't for a while.
Council member, if you asked me a question, I'm pretty sure I've got an opinion. Uh, so uh, uh, so yeah, I do actually. Um, I think that there are issues of selection. And I think maybe having a member of the planning uh commission being uh on the selection committee, whoever that might be. I also think one of the things that um, probably the planning commission, maybe the planning commission and the council uh together, maybe the council on its own. But there's probably time for a retreat. I don't know that we've had a retreat for the last bunch of years, but in both as a social activity, a get to know you kind of activity. So this is talking about before, so the business meeting uh as well, what is the order of operations, how do things work uh and the like. Uh, and then I think there's also some opportunity uh for um, for for discussion as to where the town is going, how people think about the town. What are the opportunities? What are the continuing challenges? Uh, how do we uh envision ourselves? Um, what's going to make Portola Valley special uh going on for the next? Now we're going to celebrate 15 years, 60? Yeah. Uh, 60 years. Uh, but no. So what's gonna make it special in five years? What's gonna make it special in 10 years? What's our keel? What's the tack? And I think that those are things that it would be, the time is right, that's from my perspective and the guys are right. We're making, there we go, we're making these decisions. But um, it would be, it'd be a great opportunity to get everybody together, including I mean, uh, staff to, to have those kinds of conversations.
Just one more quick question in closing. Um, can you remind us what year or how long you've been serving on the planning commission?
I don't know. Um, it's been some time. Um, I think this would be my second or no, it'd be my, my third. Term.
So each term is four years?
Yeah.
So it's been eight years?
No, it's been more than that, I think.
Three terms.
Like going on four terms?
You, you took over at the end of someone's term, if I recall correctly. And then you had, this would be your third, I think.
That's right.
Cause you and I had joined roughly near each other.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. That concludes the interview. Thank you so much for coming in in person. Glad you were able to be here. Thanks for your service.
Very much for giving me a desk. I just hid in one of these little guys. That was a little embarrassing. All right. Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have um Linda Brothers, who's joining us on um Zoom. And just for those who are um in the audience and the public, we did have um some technical difficulties at the start of the meeting. So we're running 15 minutes behind on the published schedule. Um, Linda, welcome. Thank you for joining us and for your continued interest in serving on the planning commission. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Good. I did.
Yeah, uh, Linda, we're, we're working from.
Linda, we're working from a common set of questions. So we, we're just gonna rotate down the line. And the first one is, we, we have some familiarity, but for the public, let's uh hear about yourself and why you're interested in serving on the commission.
Uh, sure. And first of all, just thank you for accommodating my schedule. It's been a little crazy recently, so I appreciate the chance to do this by Zoom. Um, let's see, myself, uh, I grew up over in Palo Alto off of Restedale Road. So I, I've only actually lived in the city limits a couple of years now. But uh, feel like it's been home to me for a long, long, long time. Uh, my personal background is a biochemical geneticist who worked on uh cloning at my postdoc at Stanford after undergraduate and graduate degrees. And then I became a lawyer. Um, let me just say in passing, I'm happy to answer any questions. Let me just say in passing, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I'll kind of go through this quickly. I practiced for what is now part of the largest firm in the world. At the time, it was Sun and Shine, Nath and Rosenthal out of their San Francisco office, where I did not traditional land use, they really did environmental work. I worked most of my career with environmental consultants cleaning up environmental sites. So I would get deeply involved in the technical matters. I had, as I said, a science background. I was a chem engineer as an undergrad. So I would, I would get deeply involved in in a lot of cleanup actions. And through that, got very much involved in CEQA. I actually wrote a law review for under about CEQA in 1976. I know that's a long time ago. And I recommended that they include Indian and native burial sites in the law. And the following year, working with Louise Rennie, a former supervisor in San Francisco, we got that included in the law. So that's how long I've been involved with CEQA. I did CEQA primarily representing corporate clients, doing site reviews and new facility sightings, places like Arrowhead Water Facilities. Gatorade helped them with a plant one time. So I worked on it from a from a slightly different perspective than you see all day, every day. But needless to say, I saw what you see all day, every day, just from from a more complex side. Working very closely all my career with environmental consultants, that was a real personal pleasure for me because I had my science background. So that's kind of a quick overview. Why am I interested in this? As I said, when you interviewed me a year ago, it's something I've always wanted to do. Don't ask me why, you know, I always wanted to climb Mount Whitney, but I'm never going to do it. But this is something that appeals to me. I I like to be involved in my circumstances and I like to feel like I I have an opportunity to express my views. And I feel like I have a lot of experience to offer. I've been working hard in this role. We haven't been very busy this year, but I'm always prepared and and do my homework. And and I just love our town and want to do everything I can to preserve it. So I think that answers the most part of your question.
It does, thanks.
Hi, Linda. The next question is, given your first year of service on the planning commission, we're curious for your impressions of the meetings and specifically where you see opportunities for improvement? Or actually missed the first part of that. What if you could elaborate on what's gone well and where you see opportunities for improvement?
That's interesting. Overview of the first year, I I'm surprised we have not met more. I feel like we have a good group, even if we have some new people. I feel like it's a good, the planning commission is a good institution. It it seems to me that when we have met, things have gone pretty swimmingly most of the time, but our meetings have been pretty few and far between. It was clear, I think, that we were underutilized. And I think it's related to the fact that, you know, John's predecessor maybe didn't see the best of us. I thought we did some amazing work. I thought the the Brothers Targ memo that some of you were involved in as we were preparing it was just a brilliant piece of work. And I guess I don't take credit for it just because my name is on it. It was very much a collaborative project. But it and it was a lot of work, but I think it got to really some some major issues that I feel like we need to address going forward. I don't know if this is the time or the place to get into those details. But I guess the fact that that eventually became the post adoption memo from you guys, from the council. One of the reasons I would like to continue is I would like to see that through. I I feel like our role as a, you know, judicial judicial body overviewing a permit versus our role as an administrative body, setting things up is an important distinction. And I really feel like we, as a planning commission, and hopefully those of us as a town, are able to get some different kinds of what's the right word? I don't want to use the word restrictions. Baseline points of view into our municipal code. I mean, an example for me is, I feel like we don't have enough park space. Of course, we've got trails all over the place, but I feel like we don't have enough park space. But people can come into the town and and if we start to implement this housing element, we're going to have a lot of new people in town. And we don't really have anything that triggers additional taxes, for lack of a better word, additional land dedication to increase the amount of park space. I play pickleball and I see the conflicts personally every single day when I'm over there. Dogs all over the place on the fields, some in leashes, some not. And I know that the Parks and Rec Committee, when we had it, was trying hard to find a place for a for a dog park. So I think I I look at that as part of what we do with this post adoption plan and part of what is a real opportunity for us on the planning commission to get together. More impressions from the last year and a little bit about where we could go. I feel like we're really underutilized. I I personally don't know what our jurisdiction is. It's not laid out anywhere clearly that I could find. And I think that clarifying that would help a great deal. I I think you're the council, you have your own opinions, but I feel like we could offer an awful lot more to the governance of the town by reviewing a lot of, a lot of stuff that eventually gets to you. We provide another opportunity for public input. And because we don't have the same level of responsibilities that you do or the same breadth of responsibilities that you do, we we have the ability to get into some issues in a little more detail. I could give you a very specific example, came up at one of our meetings recently. Somebody, a a town member wanted to, we have, we have a municipal code that says you're supposed to underground your power lines from the pole to your house. And there was a request for an exemption. And when we got the presentation from the staff and the consultants and everybody else, our municipal code says, when feasible and practicable. The lawyers amongst you, Judith and others, will know that practicable is different from practical. And nobody in the room knew that. So I'm sitting there waiting for the finding on practicability so I can make my decision on the planning commission and that point. It turns out that sort of around the corner and down the street, they did give a lot of the necessary information. I had to rely on information from the applicant himself, which I guess in the administrative record, because I got it in public comment. But it's just a perfect example of where we have the opportunity to get into something in greater detail. That's an issue that's never going to go to you guys. It's an issue that comes up a lot. The statute, the municipal code itself says that we should put some policy together. We don't have the policy. And there we were operating under a a policy that was sort of unusual. Part of that, I think, is because we haven't had, or we didn't at the time, have a permanent planning director in place. But it's just an example of the kind of opportunities we have to get into some detail on a topic. And then may or may not raise to you, the council, the policy issue there. We have this code requiring for people to underground the lines. And as best I can tell, it's it's on the books. I don't have the data to know how often people are requesting exemptions and how often they are actually undergrounding the lines. And obviously, since I live at the ranch where everything's underground, I do have a sort of a bias on that. It's just, I I don't want to take a lot of time with that specific, but it's an example of the kind of situation where I think we could be offering a lot more for the town. We could be solving a problem over the longer term. We could be identifying not only a specific action we had to take, but also the bigger picture. I guess I could go on and on and on on that question, but I think it'd probably be prudent to stop at that. I I guess interrupt myself and say, I think the level of preparation and participation has been pretty variable amongst the different members of the planning commission. And I think part of that is that we haven't had a real momentum. We haven't had regular meeting schedule. And I think there's a lot of little tweaks that could be done to to improve all of that, one of which I mentioned in passing earlier, somehow or other, clarifying what really, what our jurisdiction really is. I I'm not out to increase the jurisdiction, but I'm out to have clarity as to what is our jurisdiction, what we can help the council with and where we can have additional input from the public as well as make sure these issues get aired. So I'll I'll stop at that.
Thank you, Linda.
So Linda, what strategies would you use to build consensus among members of the planning commission?
Interesting. Well, that sort of presupposes we don't have consensus. I would say for the most part, we have had consensus. I might be wrong about that if you go back and look at the data, but I I have felt like we've gotten along pretty well for the most part. We have very varied backgrounds and interests and experience. And I think a huge amount of respect amongst for each other. And I think we all listen pretty well. I think that one important part of the functioning of the planning commission actually has been what has and what has not been brought to us and the format in which it has and has not been brought to us. That comment sort of precedes John, John's friend, brilliant to work with and really a pleasure, and thank you, John, again. But different things came to us in different ways. At one point, we were asked to just opine on something and we opined on it. And then when I listened to the presentation to the council, what we opined wasn't what was presented to the council. So the the issue's not so much with council as it is the whole functioning of the whole organization and the whole body. Is that responsive, Craig?
Thank you, Linda.
Oh, this is the, this is the comment about foreseeable conflicts of interest. Do you have any conflicts of interest, but also I added to it last time, what you see us looking at, what you see the planning commission looking at going forward?
Fortunately, I'm retired, so I don't think I have any conflicts of interest. I mean, generically, I, you know, I might have something regarding the ranch or near my house came up, but no, I I don't have any conflicts of interest that I can foresee. And the other part of your question is, what do I see going forward? Is that right?
Yes.
Well, personally, I would like to see us involved as a commission and maybe also as individuals in the post adoption plan related to the to the housing element. I think that's really important. I think there are a lot of code changes that are necessary, that need to come out. The zoning, obvious, being an obvious one. Safety element. We aren't a body of what I'd call original jurisdiction. Again, I get back to my question to what our role really is. So we get what's brought to us by the planning department, and that includes some very specific situations. Obviously, we're in our more sort of, I call judicial role. But I would like to see us really dive in on some of the pieces that are necessary to maintain the town with with the vision that we have now. I mean, I love the town, I love the mood, I love the the goals. But I but I think that there are some changes that need to be made. I mean, an example that pops into my head, it's just crazy, but we have a whole code section about a subdivision for a subdivision over, and I forget the number, but 50 or 80 houses or something. It's, it's so irrelevant, but it does talk about things that might be relevant in other circumstances. It is just stuck in there, three pages of code. You know, why is it there? It was probably brought in at some update for some other reason. But things like that, that that are just kind of rampant throughout that that need to be looked at. I I certainly personally would be very much happy to just take some major sections of this thing and see what really needs to be renewed. I know it sounds easy to do that, sit down in a corner with your black and white paper, Linda, but it's not easy, of course, because we've got such an active community and so many pieces of input. But I think you guys have made a lot of progress on fire safety, but I think there's more to do there, too. So I think there's a wide range of issues for us to address. I think we could be very helpful on a lot of those issues by going into some depth. I personally have volunteered to write the code. We we talked about a sequel code and the Brothers Targ memo, and it's in your post adoption memo. And people said you can't do it. Well, you know, I I could
Thank you. That's
steal and do it, so.
That's a comprehensive answer. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. I'm going to have to wrap up a little bit abruptly here, Linda. We were running behind by 15 minutes and we're trying to catch up a little bit and at least stay just 15 minutes behind. So thank you very much for your continued interest, for your service. And as mentioned, staff will be reaching out to all interviewees with the decisions by the end of the day today.
Okay. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next interviewee for the planning commission is Carter War. Carter, please, he's in the schoolhouse with us. Thank you for joining us in person, Carter.
Hey, well, Carter, for the public who is listening on the record, just background on yourself and why you're interested in serving on the planning commission. I know you answered some of this in your submission, but it'd be great to hear the highlights.
Well, I I've been around for a long time. First time I visited and fell in love with Portola Valley was in 1981. And I was visiting, my future wife, who grew up and lived in Menlo Park. I came up Alpine Road, crossed underneath the freeway after, you know, me complaining about, you know, how the Bay Area looked. You know, passed through there, passed by, but now it's, you know, Glen Oaks and seeing horse, you know, horse places and trees really looked like and reminded me of where I grew up in rural Oregon. And I told my future wife, Tammy, you know, that I was going to live here. You know, and she laughed her butt off, you know, saying that I'd never be able to have enough money or, you know, be able to do do all of it. And so I I'm, Tammy and I moved to Portola Valley in 1988 and pursued a remodeling project, you know, on my house. And, you know, got to know the planning staff, you know, mainly Ellen Shiller. And she encouraged me, you know, to apply for the ASCC. And I told her, no, I didn't really want to do that. And she encouraged John James, who's, you know, up here on the town council wall of fame, you know, to put the full court press on me, you know, to become an ASCC member. I became an ASCC member, you know, for the first time in 1991, 10 years after I fell in love with the town. I served 21 years. I love this place, you know, and I I believe that you know, this town is a lot better because, you know, it's mainly run by volunteers and people who love it, you know, rather than outsiders. So that's really my point of view, you know, is to carry on some history. I believe in why the town was first founded, you know, the Western Hills, you know, and development. I think there were some strategies around that that probably weren't correct, but I think the the heart behind it was. And a lot of those people up on the wall, you know, were longtime friends of mine. And I believe that my longevity here, you know, both, you know, living and practicing and riding my horses and here and, you know, enjoying the open space is part of what I can bring to the planning as an active planning member to help make the rules, guide the plan and interpret some of what has gone, gone before us in history, because I've been here for
Thank you, Carter. We know that you've observed or participated in planning commission. We know that you've observed or participated in Planning Commission meetings over the last year, and so this question really gets to your impressions of those meetings. And in particular, what do you think has gone well, and where do you see opportunities for improvement?
I think the Planning Commission, when it gets an opportunity to work, does it really do. I've been disappointed for the last few years that the Planning Commission had met less than half the time. The ASCC has met, you know, almost less. These are two very good and very important commissions, you know, over the history of Portola Valley, you know, where there's, you know, 10 people that love the town and do it, view it as volunteers to help guide the town. I think the mistake, and part of what has divided the town, there's too many outside consultants and too many experts and too much money being spent, you know, where, you know, the 10 volunteers, you know, could have, should have, you know, done more of, more of that planning work with the assistance, you know, of the experts, rather than the experts spoon-feeding them and developing what the answer should be, you know, and then asking for the concurrence.
Thank you.
So if you were on the Planning Commission, what strategies would you use to build consensus with the other members?
I think that consensus building is all about fellow participants hearing and understanding, you know, what everyone else's perspective is, and being able to articulate what that perspective is back to them, and to explain to those who don't understand, you know, what the difference is. Consensus almost always arrives around what the best, most common sense solution is. But it gets derided by hyperbole, you know, and by issues that can deride because they're inflammatory. And so one of the best lessons I learned, you know, was actually being a member of the consensus, you know, where we would hear neighbors who had been next door neighbors for decades, you know, get into tiffs about issues between the two. It seems trite, it seems simple to solve. But one of the things, you know, that I learned, one of the people that I learned most from, you know, was, but I, you know, was able to listen and tip, understand what people's issue, you know, explain it back, you know, that he did understand, and then explain, you know, to the others, you know, where the bulk of the ground was common, and to focus in on those things that, that were divisive. And then have the conversation about those, those divisive things in the, in the context of all of the common ground that is there. And I think the Planning Commission and the ASCC have the responsibility and the ability, when they meet every two weeks, to be the voice of reason and the explainer, you know, of what's going. And whether, you know, it's about a specific project or a major housing element issue, you know, these commissions have the ability, with their bi-monthly meetings, to be a great place for people to vent and a great place to learn why it's good and where all of the common ground is.
My next question is about conflict of interest, and, and I know you're the master of managing that, and just gives you a chance to speak to it.
I have an enormous number of conflicts of interest, you know, because of the active practice that I pursue in these meetings. And, you know, because of it, you know, there are an awful lot of issues that I have to, you know, step away from. I think that, you know, could be potentially offset, you know, by the education and the consensus-building effort, you know, that I believe I can help, you know, the Planning Commission do, and the communication that I know that I can, you know, help everyone understand why certain things are the way that they are, and how, you know, the common good is equally benefited because of that. I have to step down from prior issues, prior dispositions. I pursue, you know, 40 to 60 projects a year, you know, in Portola Valley and Good Side. So there are a lot, a lot of things that I can't do. But with the implementation of the housing, I think there are a lot of things that I can help the town do, because of the history that I have, knowing why things have been the way that they have, and, you know, help the town through this, which I think is going to be just as rough with the housing home itself.
Thank you. Does anybody have any follow-up or ad hoc questions that kind of covers? Jeff, do you-
But you're about to go straight into the ASCC, you're going to be in the ASCC. So how do we want to navigate that, because you've been interfacing with that? And, you know, my, my question would be, what you're viewing, your different roles-
Being applicable to the ASCC and the Planning Commission, like, if we're ready to segue into, you know, help us understand the roles that you would play, are the conflicts different? That, you know, what would you prefer, if you prefer anything?
I put my name in to make sure that there's a qualified candidate, you know, for either the Planning Commission or the ASCC. I had, when I put my name into John, I didn't know, you know, that Nicholas and Lenny were planning on re-upping. I feel the town is enormously benefited, you know, by their participation in the Planning Commission. And I think that if the Planning Commission, you know, can, can gain access, you know, to the items and the elements in a more contributory and, and as builders of the plan, I would see, you know, to them, you know, on Planning Commission, because they don't have the conflicts, you know, that I do. On the ASCC, the conflicts are far fewer, you know, because the, the projects that the ASCC deals with are more localized, and the sphere of influence around the ASCC items, you know, is, is both, both shorter in distance and shorter, you know, in time, you know, for how long those potential conflicts are. I worked on a lot of properties in Portola Valley, but, you know, a project that has been completed, you know, that's been completed for years, to me is no longer a conflict because I don't have an income, you know, coming from a neighboring plant. At the same time, because I know the relationships between, you know, the geometry, the geography, the geology, the utilities, you know, and, and the, both the zoning, you know, the zoning map, you know, the zoning ordinance and the general plan, I, I don't, I feel that my contributions on the ASCC are without major conflicts. My contributions on the Planning Commission would have major conflicts. And because, you know, Linda and Nicholas have at least put their names in, you know, I would see to those people that have less conflict. So, but my, my answers to the Planning Commission questions, you know, to me are still germane, you know, to my participation in it.
Thank you. And in terms of process, because you were the next up for ASCC, are you guys comfortable with us just pivoting into that? Thank you for that suggestion, Judith. And so a slight, a pivot on the, the question that's already been asked in terms of, obviously you're very familiar with the ASCC, you've attended many, many ASCC meetings. If you could provide your impressions of those meetings in general, and where you, what you think has been going well. We know, we, we've heard the frequency is an issue, but beyond the frequency, in terms of those meetings, your impressions of how they've been going, what's been going well, and where you see opportunities for improvement?
The ASCC, I think, is, and has been defined as such, you know, in, you know, kind of the planning community as the first line of defense, you know, that they're doing about it. And I think that the ASCC historically has done a great job of explaining, you know, what the design guidelines mean, and being a real contributor, you know, and why the town looks as good as it does. The things that I don't think are working well is the process, you know, more recently in the last two years, you know, where planning staff, you know, acts as a gatepost, you know, to applicants actually getting feedback in the ASCC. Historically, you know, in the first 15 years of my participation, from '91 on, the ASCC was utilized as a communication tool for the town, you know, to applicants, so that applicants could actually, you know, get early and inexpensive feedback, you know, on their ideas, you know, so that the ASCC could have, could make contributing comments, you know, to a design before it was baked, you know, and before tens and tens of thousands of dollars had been spent, you know, on experts in engineering, you know, so that moving a building or changing its height or its elevation, you know, or moving the driveway or, you know, where the drainage structures were going to be, you know, were very easy to do, you know, and applicants, you know, would see that as contributing to the effectiveness and to the success of their design. I, I think right now, you know, where either through legal mandates or mandates, you know, by somebody, you know, the town doesn't allow the ASCC, you know, to see, you know, a project until it's really kind of overly big, you know, and there's too much design, you know, consulting, and too many expenses been paid, you know, before they get a chance to actually get some constructive feedback. And I would love, you know, for the ASCC to actually have the opportunity to meet every two weeks, you know, and see projects when they're, when it's baked. I, I believe that the process will go more quickly for applicants. I think that applicants will feel a greater sense of contribution by the town, and I think the town will benefit from it. There've been a couple of heels, you know, of ASCC decisions that had never happened before during that time, because the staff insisted that, you know, that projects were overly big, and then applicants are less likely to want to make any changes at all. So I, I think that's the biggest change that I would open, you know, with the ASCC.
Thank you. So I, my question was focused on strategies for consensus, and as far as I'm concerned, I feel like you already answered that, so I think I'm good. I'll pass.
I agree.
You want to ask five? How do you stay informed about current events and issues?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. We've moved to a different sheet. There we go. Okay. How do you view the balance between the rights of single-family property owners to develop their property and choose the design of their house versus the impacts to the character of the surrounding streetscape and the rights of neighboring property owners?
It's a, it's a very important factor. The first one is for the ASCC to help people understand that why it looks so good-
Yeah.
-is because everyone had a right to do, do what they did, and that the ASCC has acted as a good guy, you know, helping it blend, you know, and helping it work, you know, together, and that those, the benefit of, of the, the larger set of controls and limitations or, you know, guides, is to the benefit of, of everything. Because everyone that comes to me, you know, that wants to do a private project believes that they've, you know, spent their money, you know, and they need to have, you know, everything that they're, they have a right to. And the ASCC has, you know, the responsibility, you know, of, you know, guiding them to understand that there is a mutual benefit, you know, to actually capitulating or having their designs manipulated, you know, to fit more in keeping the potential.
Thank you.
My answer to your question, my question's even answered.
I'd like to open it up now, just for ad hoc questions and follow-up questions.
I guess, not having been on the ASCC, do you have an example of, it could be theoretical, and it probably, it's better to be theoretical, but somebody comes to you with a design plan that is somewhat out of sync with the design guidelines? How, how do you build consensus with, how do you go about doing what you just said, which is convincing the applicants there's a mutual benefit? I haven't been through the process, so I'm kind of curious, because it's a, it builds on the building consensus among the ASCC members, but you're, you're in a two-way balancing situation there.
There are some great examples, you know, during my early tenure on the ASCC, you know, where, you know, the town planner, Tom Blas, you know, would be up against a property owner in the design team that wanted to pursue something that was clearly outside the bounds of, of the design guidelines. It was, and what he would, you know, would be to explain that, hey, you know, there's some things here that just, just aren't kosher, and you can take this to the ASCC, you know, but I want to let you know that there are going to be some issues. And it was early enough in the design, so there were still issues, you know, and onsite field meetings tended to be the most enlightening for applicants, their neighbors, for design professionals, and the ASCC, you know, to actually go and see and walk and point and look, and look at the trees, and look at the dirt, you know, look, look where the water is and where it's going to run, and, and look at the relationship between the property. And it, almost invariably, you know, the, the best decisions and guidance, you know, would come, you know, during that hour or hour and a half, you know, that was dedicated where everyone was onsite, and we all heard each other's words, and we all looked and saw, you know, the same, you know, sticks and, you know, and ribbons and paint, and said, wow, there's, we, there's a missed opportunity, you know, and if, you know, if every change or every adjustment was shifting from, from if we do this, there's an opportunity to do this, you know, where there's a mutually beneficial solution, almost invariably, you know, a good solution came out of it. You know, there'd be some, you know, grumbling and some ground kicking and, you know, and we'd all get poisoned up periodically, but the, the field meetings were essential, you know, to making, you know, the ASCC a, a real working body, you know, that, that could hear what the neighbors say and hear what the applicants and their design professionals say, and kind of sort- and kind of sort, sort it out so that there would be a set of opportunities that would come out of it. But it was essential that that, those designs were still movable and manipulable, you know, before they get to be any.
Thank you, Carter. Any other follow-up? No. All right. That concludes the interviews. Thank you so much for the two per. Right. All right. Gina, welcome. Gina Dixon's going to be joining us by Zoom.
Hello.
Thank you very much.
Hi. Can you guys see, can you see and hear me? I know my camera's in a little bit of a strange location, but.
I've seen stranger. Don't worry about it. All right.
Nice to meet you and thanks for coming in to talk with us. Well, the first question is easy. We read your statement, obviously, but tell us anything you think would be relevant about yourself and why you want to serve on the town's ASCC.
Yeah, so I have lived in Portola Valley since 2018. I am an architect at Fergus Carver Architects, which is based in Palo Alto, and I work on single-family residential projects throughout the Bay Area, Portola Valley included, and I'm assuming that will come up with a discussion of conflicts of interest later. But we do have projects throughout. We don't do a ton of projects in Portola Valley. But anyway, I've been practicing for about 12 years, primarily working on single-family residences, but have also worked on some smaller, more boutique commercial projects, some multifamily projects as well. And yeah, I think that, you know, the, the integration of architecture into Portola Valley is, you know, it, it makes it such a beautiful place. And so I think that's, you know, really important as, you know, new development is happening in the town, to be able to, you know, weigh, weigh in on that and how that's done, coming in with a unique perspective as an architect who is balancing the zoning code and the design guidelines and the desires of homeowners. And to be able to bring that into the ASCC, I think is very important.
Thank you. My question is, have you attended an ASCC meeting in the last year? And if so, what are your impressions?
I have not. I have one in a few weeks, but I, you know, in, something that I would say is actually something Carter brought up, which I would agree with, that, you know, finding a way to get the ASCC feedback into the process sooner, I think would be really beneficial. He mentioned too, just the expense of putting together the drawings that do make their way in front of the ASCC and, you know, being able to, being able to have those discussions when projects are a little more half-baked, I think would be really, would be really beneficial. You know, it's as people are, and I'm obviously coming at it from the perspective of people designing homes, but it can be, you know, an emotional process for homeowners. They're investing a lot of time and energy and expense into this. And so, you know, being able to have those discussions sooner, I think would just make the process more enjoyable or easier, you know, take some of the unknowns out of the process at an earlier point. I know that's not quite answering the question.
No, no, no. That's good. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine. This makes sense. So how do you view the balance between the rights of single-family property owners and their, you know, interest in developing their properties and choosing, you know, their particular design of a house versus the impact of the character of the surrounding streetscape and sort of the neighboring properties?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so, you know, my personal feeling is, you know, all, every project is existing within a greater context. And, you know, that's applicable to any project that, you know, we're working on or would be reviewing. And, you know, in the general plan, you know, throughout the zoning code, throughout the design guidelines, you know, this balance of nature and, you know, that architecture defers to nature, you know, that is a tenet of Portola Valley. And so, you know, applying that when looking through these projects is, is obviously critical. And, you know, it's thinking of greater context. We are, of course, also looking at projects, you know, within the neighborhood. And I think it's really important as, you know, we're, we're working on a project or looking at a project, you know, take in Portola Valley, you know, getting out and having, you know, getting out and having the homeowner see, you know, who, who is around me? What are these houses doing? Do I, you know, is there a view over top of my property, for instance, that I need to be respectful of, you know, parts of the nature of Portola Valley that, you know, people are, you know, attached to or, you know, have a right to be feeling, for instance?
Okay, thank you.
My question is about conflicts of interest, but you already touched on it. Is there anything you wish to say in addition?
I guess the only thing I would add is that, you know, there, my office is working on, I think right now we have three active projects in Portola Valley and we maybe look at 10 potential projects a year. So while there would be obviously some cases where I would have to step away, I don't think that that's something that would happen all that often.
Gina, one follow-up on that. It would also apply to where your personal home is relative to other developments in town. Do you mind sharing what street you live on?
Yes, I live on Corta Madera Road.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, just one question, just, you know, obviously these, these meetings can be a little bit contentious. Do you have any strategies or experiences that have been helpful in terms of building consensus among sort of the ASCC or among applicant, between applicants and neighbors?
Sure. So in a way, you know, maybe in a less contentious environment, that is something that I'm doing on a regular basis, you know. We, my office is a pretty collaborative office. And so, you know, clearly presenting ideas, listening to feedback, you know, making changes and making decisions is something that I'm used to doing. I think, you know, in terms of important elements of that, you know, approaching things with an open mind, listening and really absorbing what others are saying and, you know, sharing my own thoughts clearly and concisely. I think I would consider myself a pretty reasonable, calm person and also pretty open-minded. So just, you know, giving, allowing everybody to communicate their thoughts and then kind of breaking that down and figuring out, you know, where we have places of agreement, where we have places where we're not agreeing and how we can, you know, build bridges to get to a place where we end up with consensus.
Thank you. Are there any other additional questions from the panel at this point? No. All right. Gina, thank you so much for your interest and for joining us today. And as mentioned, we'll be making decisions at the end of this meeting and staff will follow up with all the applicants. So thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Take care. Hi, Rebecca.
Hi there. My fourth time, I think, in the past less than a year.
Well, we'll start by making you repeat. Sorry. But for the public and for the record, some background, please, and why you're interested in continuing to serve on the ASCC.
I've lived in Portola Valley for about 23 years, I think. And we originally decided to move here because of the natural beauty of the surroundings. I, my background is I have degrees in chemistry, biology, immunology and nutrition. I've worked for a number of vitamin companies as well as internet startups. As you all know, I'm deeply involved in community service. That's one of my sort of core tenants. And I, I obviously run the PV Forum, so I'm, most people in town at least know my name. I've enjoyed being on the ASCC for the past year. I enjoyed looking at plans, going through them, meeting new residents that come before us to talk about their projects. And one of the main reasons that I want to continue to serve on the ASCC is, you know, the ASCC to me is the, sort of the initial or the main organization in town that helps to preserve our natural beauty by working with various applicants to make sure that their projects fit in with our general plan. And that would be, yeah, answer you. Thank you.
Thank you. Given your initial year on ASCC, if you could share your impressions of how the process and meetings has, have been going and in particular, what you think has gone well and where do you see opportunities for improvement?
In general, things have gone well. I think the group has been very congenial. We work well together. Obviously, it's changing this year, but people are very open-minded. People listen. I would say in areas that I might recommend for the future is I would love to have more visibility on projects that are coming down the pipeline. I know people in town talk to me when they, they find out that I'm on the ASCC, not so much to discuss their projects, but just to kind of get a better sense of timing, better sense of priorities and, and when their project will be able to come before the ASCC because they don't really know. So I can't answer those questions because I don't have visibility on the pipeline. So I think that there is, there would be, it would be helpful for those of us on the committee to get a better sense of, you know, so we can prepare better, so we can know what the issues are coming up before us to, to, to read into and just have a sense of the workload that might be coming up. Because when, when it's fully active, when we're meeting every couple of weeks, it's a lot of work. There's no question about that. Preparing, going through, you know, 100-page plans, trying to read tiny little, tiny little writings and it's, you know, it's quite a bit of work. So it's nice to have a better sense. And I, and I agree with what Carter said earlier about having, having residents have the opportunity to have feedback from the ASCC about their projects before they spend so much money and, and get all the consultants and all that in there. I think that, given that we, we aren't that busy, you know, that would certainly be, you know, we have the time available to do that. So that would be one area that I would also recommend that we consider going.
Thank you.
Welcome. So my question is, how do you view the balance between the rights of single-family property owners to develop their property and choose the design of their home versus the impact to the character of the surrounding streetscape and the rights of neighboring property owners?
Well, I think that sort of sums up what the role of the ASCC is. It's essentially to adjudicate between the residents and their private property rights and the needs of the community and their neighbors. And certainly in quite, in a couple of the cases that came before us this past year, there was a lot of back and forth between trying to understand what the residents, what the applicant wanted and what their neighbors wanted or didn't like or whatever. So I, I view that as probably part of the most important role of the ASCC is just to figure out how we can ensure that applicants are happy with their projects, but in a way that their projects don't interfere with the quality of life of their neighbors and, and don't create an eyesore or create, you know, a problem with our natural surroundings so that they're, so these properties are developed in a private manner so that it's not something that's very loud on the side of the street, on the edges of the streets or edges of the property. So yeah, it's a key, key role for the ASCC.
About conflicts of interest and what you see in your future?
I don't see that I have particularly any conflicts of interest besides not being allowed to, to rule on cases that are within 500 feet of my home. And when I got the training, when I first joined, there was also, I was told that I have to kind of look into the 500 to 1,000 feet of my home. So beyond that, I don't see that. I don't see that I have other conflicts of interest. I know there were some issues with the fact that I'm the moderator for the PV Forum, but I don't see those roles as ever co-mingling or or being involved in each other. So I don't think I have any and I'm not an architect. So I don't have case, I don't have projects in town.
Maybe you could just say a little bit more about that and how your role as the moderator would be changed or should be changed or could be changed by your role?
Well, obviously I don't discuss cases on the PV Forum. I don't discuss my opinions about individual projects on the PV Forum. I don't, in terms of moderation, if there were, if people were to comment on the PV Forum about particular projects that were before the ASCC, as my role as the moderator, I only step in, in general, if the comments are disrespectful. I have a kind of a pretty, I feel it's a pretty low-key moderation method in terms of making sure that everyone feels that they can speak their minds and give their opinions on the PV Forum to the community, whether I agree with them or not. And in many cases, I do not agree with many of the loud comments that sometimes come across the PV Forum. So I just make sure that people are allowed to, you know, are allowed to make their opinions known and that they're correct and factually correct. So I, I think, I think the PV Forum shows a lot of different views and I don't ever step in and say, no, you're not allowed to have that view.
Thank you very much. That's very cool.
In your year on ASCC, have you found any kind of strategies or techniques that help you in terms of just, just getting to consensus or sort of bridging some of these gaps between neighbors or your fellow commissioners?
Interestingly enough, in the cases that we've had this year, we've been pretty, there's been a lot of consensus. I mean, everybody has sort of slightly different areas of expertise. So we've been able to build on, on each other's areas of expertise. But I think everybody is really good at listening to each other. They're very good at, of trying to understand where other people come from. We did have a case of a, of a fence. One property owner wanted to put a fence right on their property line and, and that would have interfered with the enjoyment of the neighbors. And that one was a difficult case. Because, you know, as, as have been mentioned before, you know, you have two neighbors that were very close friends that some, something happened and they became not close, you know, they're almost enemies. It was really sad, actually. And I know Dana brought a bottle of champagne to try to help them bridge that gap. So, well, you know, it just being on the site, seeing the actual topography of how that fence might work or might not work, I think it was helpful for both sides to be able to communicate, you know, to the applicant that, well, you know, look at the sandstone that you're going to be putting a fence into. From a construction, practical construction standpoint, it's, it's not going to be easy to build that fence where you want it. And it's, and it's, you know, and that, and it's not going to be convenient for your neighbor to have this fence literally hanging over their, their property. So, you know, in that kind of way, just working out and finding win-win solutions, finding different possibilities and options was, you know, something the group of us worked together to try to say, you know, let's move it over here so that at least your, you know, your dogs are confined or whatever the issue was. So I think just listening to each other was our main reason. Um, so I think just listening to each other was our main reasons.
Thank you. Does anybody have any follow up questions for Rebecca?
Just a quick one. Um, was there anything that you found a surprising challenge? And if so?
Well, like I kind of mentioned, the, the quantity of work.
Okay, sure.
I mean, I knew it was work, but it's a lot. It's, it's, you know, and I have the time, so it's not an issue for me. But, you know, I think people do need to know what they're getting into. Uh, I guess the only, it's a totally minor thing, you know, as my, as I get a little older and my glasses and I start, I have to say those little tiny writings, I, I do have to, I do have to spend quite a bit of time kind of trying to figure out what that tiny little mark was on the landscape plan. But I enjoy doing that, so it's.
Okay.
But I didn't see any other issues.
Thank you. Thank you Rebecca. All right, well, that closes the interview portion, um, of the meeting. And our, the first thing that we would do is move on to discussion. Um, I am wondering if we want to take like a five minute bio break. Would like to, I'll just say. All right, I'll call the meeting back in session. Um, I want to remind those, um, who are joining us on Zoom today that we did have oral communications for this topic at the start of item three A. So we will go right now into, um, discussion. Who would like to start? And I guess we will take, um, let's see guys, I'm assuming, let's just talk through planning commission first. Who would like to start?
I'll start. Um, I, I, um, it was actually really nice to meet Ed and then to see some, a new, a new, a new voice here in town, somebody who's interested in things. And I hope he will continue to, uh, uh, participate. I will say, I think, um, I, I think Nicholas and Linda have worked reasonably well, uh, on the planning, planning commission. I, I certainly haven't heard complaints about them. I thought they did a lot of, they did a lot of, you know, very good work. Honestly, in housing element, I, I would personally probably support just keeping them in place, uh, for the time being. That'd be my, that'd be my first instinct. I'd be happy to hear other, other ideas.
I totally agree. Um, I think it's really important that we reach out to Ed and, and thank him for, uh, and encourage him to.
And find other spots for him.
Other things. Right now we could use him for sure. I think he's great. Um, and I, I think Nicholas and Linda, the fact that they're willing to do it, they're really well qualified and they really do care. So, um, I think they're, they're a test.
Yeah, so I agree. I mean, I think this is a pretty easy decision. I'm, I definitely like to encourage Ed to join a committee, um, get to sort of know Portola Valley government a little bit. I think both Nicholas and Linda have done a good job and Carter sort of already said he'd be willing to, um, pass the, I don't know, pass the ton, but, um, defer to them. Um, so I, in my mind, Nicholas and Linda makes sense.
Yeah, I, I'm pretty much in the same place. Um, Ed, I, I mean, first I want to say we're incredibly blessed to have all of these people stepping up. It's, it's amazing. Then looking forward on the planning commission, the topics that are coming up in the next year are pretty tough ones. There are the implementation and for us to have the benefit of people who've seen how we got to the place we are, I think we'll be off the ground and running more quickly with them to continue on. But I would love to see Ed, uh, get engaged, um, just listen into a handful of different meetings and see what might be of interest because I, I think there's so many ways he can get involved and would love for him to reach out to us. And again, Carter, uh, expressed a desire for Nicholas to continue, so I would defer to that.
So I guess I'll be the one, um, uh, outlier feedback. Um, and I'll just share because obviously this, that there's consensus around, um, the decision here. But I really appreciated, um, well, I guess first in principle, you know, as I sit through these meetings, I think about, we've had, we have a lot of great candidates, so how do we differentiate between them? And, um, you know, in principle, the way I look at it is, number one, through the lens of conflicts and how significant the conflicts are in terms of the important decisions we coming, have coming down the pike and how that will affect things. And then secondly, um, you know, cultivating space for new volunteers and getting new people involved. Um, and so it's absolutely nothing personal with respect to Nicholas. He's done an incredible job and given tons of years of service to the community. But having been a person who wasn't able to get on a commission because there were longstanding, um, people, you know, for two plus, um, uh, terms in those roles, I maybe am more sensitive to wanting to open up, to embrace new volunteers, um, in the community. And so I would have, um, you know, recommended, uh, Ed for that reason. But I respect and understand the perspective of all of you and your reasons why. So I just wanted to share that. So yes, I would like to entertain a motion for the appointments.
Um, so I move that, uh, we appoint Nicholas Targ and Linda Brothers to the planning commission.
Second.
For your term.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Uh, council member Taylor?
Aye.
Council member Hupdi?
Aye.
Council member Alfs?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Haskell?
Aye.
Mayor Wernicke?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
So we will move on to ASC and, um, would like to open it for discussion.
I have a process question more than anything. Could one of the positions in one year?
Yes, true.
So I just want to know how we're going to proceed to evaluate, among the three great candidates, how we think about that.
Well, I think that would be part of your deliberation, but I would take up the appointment of the, um, appointment to the one year term first and then move on to the appointment of the full terms next.
All right, thank you. So let's have a discussion. And in that discussion, if you would like to share your preferences for which term, um, and then we will do, um, two different nominations.
Sure, I'll start again. Um, well, obviously we have three people for three seats. It's kind of hard to say no to anyone. I definitely think after her one year of service, I think Rebecca is, is very much deserving of a four year term. Which leaves the other, the, the choice between Gina and Carter for a one year versus four year. I, you know, with all due respect, I still, the, the, the conflicts with Carter's situation concern me more so than Gina's. Uh, I mean, he does a lot of work in town. I, I was on ASC with him for three years. He did have to recuse from a lot of things. Um, and perceptually it was a little awkward having sort of, you know, him or his architects in the room sort of putting things to us. I, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure, I, I mean, I, I might, I might sort of lean towards giving him the one year term, just, just on a trial basis and see how things work. I'd go either way on it, but that would be my first, my first, my first opinion, my first thought.
Well, I think they're all terrific and, and, uh, I particularly am fond of Gina. I, I think she's going to be a great asset to the community, uh, long-term and, uh, we're really lucky to have her. I suppose, I could go both ways. Uh, my, my original thought before you spoke was that, uh, it would be fair for her to be given a one year, uh, a, a one year term because she's going to, uh, find herself in a very difficult situation. Uh, and that having a, the reprieve of, of having to, not having to resign necessarily if she hadn't, had to make a conflicted, uh, decision. Uh, also because we could give her a chance to see if she likes it or not. If she likes it or not. That's, that was my thought. Uh, why, why she might, there may be something that appeals to her more. But for whatever reason, she needs to be, uh, she needs to be treated with great respect and, and, uh, and in, and her talents are, are, she has really significant talents to offer. That would be my.
So I, I agree. I think we've got three, three good candidates for three slots. I, I can go either way. I, I think I tend to lean toward having Gina for the one year since she's never done it before. Um, and let her get her feet wet and then decide if she wants to do it for another four years. Carter's obviously done it and Rebecca's done it. So, and they both know what they're getting into. So that would be my bias, but it's a very, you know, it's a very light bias. So I could be moved either way.
So can I. Um, I, I mirror those comments. I, I think that with the new composition of the ASC, it sounds to me like conflicts can be managed better. I take Jeff's point about his prior experience and I don't want to minimize that. Um, but I, I tend very slightly on the side of Gina for one year to make sure that it's all working and, and going in the right direction. Um, I would hope and expect that there's a re-up eventually. But, um, I would put a light finger on the Gina for the one year.
And consistent with my previous comments about, um, conflicts and opening doors to new individuals, I would, my preference would be, um, well, I'll start with Rebecca, um, uh, for the four year term. And, um, given, you know, Carter did mention, I think it was 40 to 60 projects a year in town. That is a lot of conflicts potentially. Um, and so I would, um, and also he is another person who has served historically. Um, and in the spirit of wanting to open things up to new people, um, I would propose him for the one year. And, um, Gina, for the longer term, also given that, you know, basically we have, how many? Well, we have 11 months until we do this again, essentially. It's an 11 month term, more or less, right?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, yeah. So I, uh, leave my comments at that.
I have just one more, uh, thought about this, which is, uh, and it doesn't really affect my, my opinion about this. But, uh, I, I feel like, uh, the ASC and the planning commissioner have their work cut out for them in designing the planning department and, and interacting with the planning department. And, uh, I, I wanted to put that out there so that I could understand what, if any, influence they are going to have in, in the process of building the planning department and understanding, um, what, uh, what their duties could be or should be in, in that regard, building those connections between the town and staff. That being said, I think Carter has just such an enormous understanding of the lots in town and the, and the, uh, geology and the, uh, flood risks and the aesthetics, uh, that he's a, to me, an invaluable resource for the ASC and for the planning department, uh, to get going and to be in, in congruity with the rest of the residents.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess, Mary, now that I've heard that, I, I tend to agree looking forward because they're going to probably be involved in some of the rollout of, uh, checklists and, and things like that that involve ADUs, et cetera, that will be developed. I'm not exactly sure what that list is, but if I recall the, the post-adoption activities that need to take place. I, again, I'm, I'm just erring on the side of, we want to hit the ground running with the sunrise provision and the like. And I actually expect Gina to do well and to re-up. So it, to me, it's a question of how to align it so that there's enough continuity to get through two years. And for me, it would air on the side of, uh, Carter for four, Gina for one, but, um, we're, we're lucky to have both, I think.
All right, are we ready to, would somebody like to put forward a motion?
So I move Gina Dixon for the one year term.
Second.
So, uh, council member Taylor?
Aye.
Council member Hupdi?
Aye.
Council member Alfs?
Aye.
Uh, Vice Mayor Haskell?
Aye.
And Mayor Wernicke?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you. And for the four year term?
I will nominate, uh, Rebecca Flynn and Carter War for the two four year terms.
Second.
So we have a motion in the second. Uh, council member Taylor?
Aye.
Council member Hupdi?
Aye.
Council member Alfs?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Haskell?
Aye.
And Mayor Wernicke?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
All right, thank you, everybody. Congratulations, um, to Rebecca. You're still in the room here with us. Um, and, um, thank you in advance for your service. And, um, that concludes our meeting. Thank you.
And I'd say congratulations to all the candidates.
Yeah, and thanks to everybody.